Now call the role.
Okay.
Commissioner Ford.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Proton Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Michael. Commissioner Fuller.
Here.
And Commissioner Sitten.
Here.
Okay, welcome everyone. I've got a couple of proclamations to read shortly, but I think I want to, I want to take this first part of the meeting to thank our assistant town manager Karen Witcher for her two short years that she has been with us. I can't say how much I appreciate the professionalism Karen that you brought to this job. It was being the newbie here, it, it, at four years into this job to have somebody that's seasoned and has experience in government process was, was refreshing. There was no training involved other than learning the Davidson curve, if you will. But I cannot personally thank you enough for, for all that you've done, your guidance, your insight, your candidness, your children. You know, it's, we're going to miss you. And for those of you that are out there that don't know, Karen has taken a job as the assistant county manager in Gaston County. Why she would want to go to Gastonia, I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm really looking. And I can't thank you enough for the time you've spent in Davidson and the impact and footprint that you left. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate it. I've really enjoyed my time here and working with all of you and town staff. So thank you very much.
Karen, lots of good projects. Thank you. And especially the good work digging into 251 and keeping us updated on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought we had a minimum five years.
Karen, thank you. Thank you for everything and you will be missed. And you know, you made a lot of impact in the short time that you were here and it's too bad that you're leaving, but we, we understand it and, and you know, kudos for the, the great opportunity that you're taking on.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I also want to say that your work with us beyond 251 South Street, but I look back to our pre-COVID retreat last year and, and I just think of the significance of what has come out of that retreat. And I know that there was so much effort that you put into that, you know, other staff members as well, but you can really see your guiding hand in what took place there. And I really think, I'm, I'm guessing that most if not all of my colleagues would agree that it, it put us in a place to be better poised for a number of events to include, you know, it was pre-COVID, but you just, you set us on a track that kept us going. So thank you.
Thank you.
They're being kind. So I suppose I'm.
I have to say that although I generally agree with what Jane just covered, it's unlikely I will ever forgive you for beating me in the ski ball.
I have a lovely trophy that will accompany me to Gaston County. It'll have a face of high prominence because Commissioner Ford decided he didn't want it because he actually truly won that competition.
I was going to say they're being kind. So I feel as if I must, but maybe Jim picked up for me. But I'm so sad to see you go, as you know, both personally and professionally that you've been a wonderful addition to, to town hall staff. And I second Commissioner Campbell's comments around the GO, around public facilities, around the housing and equity stuff. You've just made a tremendous impact in a short amount of time. So farewell. Unlike Mayor, I have kind things to say about Gastonia and Gaston County having done a lot of work there. But I wish you well and we will miss you dreadfully.
Thank you. I've had a great time working with all of you. I really have. It's been a lot of fun. So thank you all for your support of staff and moving some of these things forward that you all mentioned.
Karen, do you know Gaston County's most famous Tar Heel?
Walter Davis is South Mac and I'm blanking. I'm so blanking. This is terrible.
Well, this is.
Don't tell her, Dave.
Georgetown. Oh my gosh, this is terrible. You caught me on the spot, David.
It's safe. The secret is safe with us. James Worthy has got to.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. It was in the right ballgame.
The second most famous Tar Heel. You probably won't get this one. Chris, Chris Lane. Y'all remember?
I number 42. I remember Chris.
That's impressive. Actually, I wouldn't have come up with that.
But he was, he was by arrows. Why I know that one.
Yeah, that's why I know his number two. I'll just completely fess up.
No, we, 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 we know that it's a, this is a good opportunity for you Karen. And so we wish you all the best in, in, in that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So we, we have the, the next portion of our meeting, I'm going to read these proclamations. And as I do that, maybe we together can do a mind trust on figuring out how to convince Karen to stay here. But if not, we, we will bid her adieu and wish her luck. As she takes on this new challenge and I'm genuinely excited to see the good things that you do. And I, you and I have already discussed this, but when ribbon cutting is, is ready for 251 South Street, I, you have a standing invitation and we truly expect you to be there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I really do.
Okay, I've got some proclamations to read at this time. The first one is a proclamation for Historic Preservation Month, May 2021. Whereas the town of Davidson recognizes the value of historic preservation as an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Whereas many Davidson residents, groups and organizations work hard to preserve Davidson's past for future generations. Whereas the town of Davidson has had an active historic preservation commission and designated local historic district since 1989. And whereas the town of Davidson became a certified local government in 2018, demonstrating a strong commitment to historic preservation, whereas the town of Davidson continues to demonstrate its commitment to preservation through ongoing historic, historic survey work, the expansion of our local historic district, the protection of our traditional neighborhoods and historic downtown, the integration of historic elements with redevelopment and the recognition, rehabilitation and restoration of historic properties. Now therefore, I'm Mayor Rusty Knox of the town of Davidson, do hereby proclaim May as Historic Preservation Month and call upon all citizens of our town to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing this special service. Proclaim this 25th day of May 2021. Next proclamation is Small Business Week. Whereas the town of Davidson, North Carolina recognizes and values the dedication and entrepreneur spirit of small businesses that keep the state and America, American economy growing stronger. Whereas there are over 930,000 small businesses with employees in North Carolina alone, representing a majority of the total number of businesses with employees in the state. Whereas the income of North Carolina's small business owners totals over $20 billion. And these businesses employ 1.7 million North Carolinians or 45.3% of the state's non-farm private workforce. Whereas there are over 28,500 small businesses with employees in Mecklenburg County and over 69,000 sole proprietors, representing a majority of the total number of businesses in the county. Whereas it is the collaborative mission of the town, working with the Lake Norman Chamber of Commerce, Lake Norman Economic Development Corporation, Visit Lake Norman and the Small Business Administration to help our businesses grow and create new jobs in the community and Lake Norman region by providing exemplary workforce training, financial assistance programs and research and technical assistance. And whereas the town of Davidson appreciates the support of our small business community by the Lake Norman Chamber of Commerce, Central Piedmont Community College, Small Business Technology Development Center and our SCORE volunteers. Whereas during the week of May 24 through the 28th, 2021, the Lake Norman Chamber of Commerce are celebrating Small Business Week. Now therefore be resolved that I Rusty Knox, Mayor of the town of Davidson, do hereby proclaim May 24th through the 28th as Small Business Week in Davidson and urge all citizens to acknowledge and celebrate the achievements made by small businesses, both locally and nationally, and to further support your local businesses by shopping and buying local. Proclaim this 25th day of May 2021. That kicks off tomorrow, by the way, just so you guys know, tomorrow and Thursday are the, tomorrow, the award winners will be announced. And so there's, there's an event on Wednesday and Thursday. It's virtual. I will be announcing and celebrating the Davidson winner and playing music for the event virtually. So I'm looking forward to that as well. So. The next proclamation is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence. And on average, there are more than 13,000 gun, gun homicides every year. Whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. Whereas in North Carolina, has 1,300 gun deaths a year at a rate of 13 deaths per 100,000 people. North Carolina has the 24th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. Whereas gun homicides predominantly occur in cities with more than half of the firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. Whereas cities and towns across the nation, including Davidson, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. Whereas protecting the public safety in the communities where they serve as the mayor's highest priority. And whereas approximately 150 children die each year from being shot after finding an unsecure loaded firearm and the importance of gun owners to make weapons safe, secure, so no children can access them. Whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it. And are the best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Whereas the pandemic facing America has drastically impacted communities and individuals sheltering in place, which may result in situations where access to firearms result in increased risk in intimate partner violence, gun deaths, suicide by gun and unintentional shootings. Whereas in January 2013, in the presidential inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should be now celebrating her 23rd birthday. Whereas to help honor Haddaya and the more than 100 Americans who lost their lives are, are cut short every day. And the countless survivors who were injured by shooting every day. A national coalition of organizations has designated June 4th, 2021, the first day, the first Friday of June, as the 7th National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 4th, the first Friday in June of 2021, to help raise awareness about gun violence. Whereas by wearing orange on June 4th, 2021, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore be resolved, I Rusty Knox, Mayor of the town of Davidson, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim Friday, June 4th, 2021, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day and encourage all citizens to support the local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Proclaim this 25th day of May 2021. And the last proclamation is Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day, June 4th, 2021. Whereas Tourette Syndrome is an inherited neurological disorder that is characterized by involuntary physical and vocal tics that occur many times a day. And whereas Tourette Syndrome is often accompanied by other mental health disorders such as attention deficit and obsessive compulsive disorder, learning disabilities and anxiety. Whereas Tourette Syndrome and the tic disorders affect 1 in 100 children. More than 22,800 school-aged children in the state of North Carolina alone are dealing with Tourette Syndrome. And although some of these cases are aided by medication, there's no standard treatment or known cure for this disorder. Whereas there's an important need for more professional help with interest and expertise to identify, counsel and treat people with Tourette Syndrome. A disorder that is often misdiagnosed and misunderstood. Whereas positive actions to assist children and families living with Tourette Syndrome would result from a broadening of public and professional knowledge and acceptance of Tourette Syndrome. And whereas the Tourette Syndrome Association's Greater Carolinas Group are actively providing services to families, educating medical professionals and teachers, and supporting research to better understand the signs and treatments of TS. Now therefore, I Rusty Knox, Mayor of the town of Davidson, do hereby proclaim June 4th, 2021, is Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day in the town of Davidson as a special day to promote understanding, compassion and acceptance for all of our fellow citizens who deserve and need our support to break the stigma that is related to Tourette Syndrome. Proclaim this 25th day of May 2021. So with that, I'm going to now call on Town Manager Jamie Justice for any changes in the agenda.
No changes from me, Mayor.
Okay. This is where we now will move on to our COVID-19 response. And I've got an acknowledgement I would like to make first before I turn this over to Jamie and Karen and Betsy. Davidson won an award this past week. On Wednesday, May the 12th, the Central Illinois Regional Council announced the recipients of the Region of Excellence Awards in a virtual ceremony. Presented annually, these awards recognize individuals, communities and organizations for their outstanding achievements in support of Central Illinois' mission to expand opportunity and improve quality of life in the nine-county Central Illinois region, which includes both Mecklenburg and Ardell. I'm proud to announce that the town of Davidson was awarded one of three COVID-19 resiliency awards specifically, specifically for business support. Davidson has been and continues to be profoundly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and our local businesses have been particularly hit hard. But what has been so wonderful is to see how the community came together, how hard staff worked to provide resources, the way this board saw fit to be responsive to the needs of the community and how the whole town really rallied together to get our local businesses and each other through some really tough times. We're still not out of the woods yet. We've got a long way to go. But if we recognize the work that, that, that we also recognize the work we did. So a big thank you to Kim Fleming and her staff. To Amanda Preston for everything she's done with getting the word out and the rest of the staff for supporting this. And additionally, I can't say thank you enough to the residents of town to have gone well above means in, in doing everything they can to help support and promote our local businesses. So thanks to all. And that, that was great that we got that. It was well deserved. And so yay for Davidson on that one.
Absolutely. And Mayor, thank you to you and the commissioners for your support. I mean, we really couldn't have done it without your proactive direction, funding, all those things to help staff in the community kind of take care, take care of each other. So thank you.
Well, we, we are a community of small businesses and we all realize that. And it's great that we all support them. So it's, it's a big deal. So the next item under the COVID response is return to in-person meetings for Board of Commissioners and Advisory Boards. And I'm going to defer to Jamie first and, and get some input from Jamie, Karen and Betsy on this. So thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. This is a item I know board members were interested in talking about. We have had a few citizens inquire about the return to in-person board meetings. And so for discussion here, we want to talk to the board about it. I think the other thing to keep in mind is this also includes our advisory boards. They've been meeting virtually. So I think if the town board, you all want to go back into in-person, I think planning board, liability boards, et cetera, you know, could follow suit. So I just wanted to kind of think of, mention it in those terms. I think from a kind of COVID number standpoint, you know, all the numbers for our county are trending in the right direction. And you know, we can kind of go through all those, but the public health director said on our call yesterday how everything is heading in the right direction. So that's very good. And that includes our vaccination numbers for our county are heading up, heading in the right direction. So I think from that standpoint, where, where the COVID, where COVID is heading is a good thing. Of the main, the main issue that's changed really recently here is the CDC guidance that was released that really did change the way to look at things. It did provide guidance for fully vaccinated people that are less likely to transmit COVID. So that was some of the guidance. And then it, because of that, because of that science, it said that it advises that in most settings, fully vaccinated people can resume activities without wearing face coverings or physically distancing. So that's the recent CDC guidance. And then as a result of that, at the state level, the governor issued a new executive order 215 that really kind of lined up with that. So what that order did is it lifted face covering requirements in most settings, capacity restrictions and in, in all settings and social distancing requirements in all settings. So thinking about town board meetings indoors, this falls within that guidance as being something that would be in compliance to do. So I wanted to at least make, mention that based on the way we've been following with the guidance we've been received and the orders we're under, that it is, it is acceptable to go back to in-person board meetings. So, so that's the, that's the thinking there. Betsy's going to talk a little bit about the technology improvements we've made. And before we do, I think it's important just to think that you know, we've been on a Zoom platform all this time. And if we go back to in-person, we would return back to the Granicus platform that we did before. And so there really is no in-between. So it's either we go to in-person and switch to that Granicus or we, or we stay remote on Zoom. So that's the way to think about this. And Betsy, we made some really good improvements that the board needs to think about here. Would you go through those, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Jamie. So we have made some great technical, excuse me, technology advances in the boardroom. So we've added additional microphones and as well as, I'm going to share my screen here to give you an idea so you can tell what I'm talking about. We have made it so if you are viewing at home, you know, on the, the left here, this was just a static boardroom camera view. And we've made it to now where I can switch that camera view to show what is being projected on the screen. So if somebody is watching from home, they'll also see what everybody in the room is looking at when it comes to presentations. And then we can go back and forth between the camera view and the presentation view. So that is a great advancement for anybody that is going to be watching from home. And again, the more microphones and a little bit more volume control, my panel where I can control your microphones as well as the table microphones that are out there. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Let's see, just to clarify, so when you go to presentation mode, it's presentation as a single screen? Because I know one of the challenges that some folks even have in the room is the size of the font and everything else. And so it's not, it's not the split screen that you just showed. So they wouldn't be seeing camera on one side. It would go to full screen of the presentation.
Exactly. Yes, it will be the full presentation on the screen. And we can make sure that staff is using large fonts and correct formatting. So it does look great for everybody.
And the last thing I'll mention is really if you all decide tonight, you want to go back to in-person board meetings as early as your next town board meeting on June 8th, we can do it. So there's no lead time that we need. We can switch that over and then we would have the advisory boards begin kind of after whenever the town board goes back to in-person. So, so it really is up to you. If you want to start the next meeting, you start at the June 22nd meeting or some date that you all want to do. And I think that's fine. So that's kind of our perspective. I think we're, we're ready to go back to in-person if you all are. So any thoughts or you all want to talk about?
Comments from our commissioners.
So the one I was going to make was getting to the technology because the number of people who have reached out and granted, it's been over the entirety of COVID who have said, I can hear you guys now. I can see you guys now better than when I was sitting in the boardroom or trying to watch the video. So you know, that's kind of the threshold that I think we need to try to make sure because, you know, if we're saving a video for long-term, but you can't hear somebody or something's not there. So hopefully the, the tech improvements will, will mitigate those issues. The only other thing, and I think this was in one of the emails, does it bring up the question of us having to ask the question when people come into the building? That are they, you know, are they fully vaccinated or do we need to require them wearing a mask? I mean, what is that since we are creating a public space for people to gather? Are we going to just leave it on the honor system or, or has that been part of a discussion?
I would say we did think about that a little bit. And if we want to continue to follow along with the guidance of the CDC based on the science and the executive order, then I think it's perfectly acceptable to not go with a different route or to do something, anything in addition. And so what that means is it really is based on the honor system. So there is no, notice, we don't necessarily need to be checking folks to see if they've been vaccinated or not. And I would not recommend we go, we do that. So that, that's our thinking from staff's perspective.
Yeah. And I mean, Jamie, I think we've got a highly engaged group of citizens in Davidson that are pretty conscientious individuals. So I feel, I feel like the honor system will work here. I think it's time to get back in, in-person meetings now that the seat, you know, and to me, that trigger was the CDC guidance. And then the, the governor, Governor Cooper's changing the executive order. So might have a two weeks worth of dieting to do to get back into those pants, but I'm ready to, ready to throw the sport coat back on and, and head back in for a board meetings.
Thanks, Matthew. And I'll agree with that. I had one question though, that I mentioned to Jamie earlier, which was about the work session meeting. Is that the first meeting in the month or the fourth meeting, first?
Yes, the, the second Tuesday is usually the work session where around the, around the table and not at the dais.
But that was my question because that seems to be the meeting that folks had the most trouble hearing us prior to COVID and the Zoom experience. So is that something that we want to discontinue and just be at the dais for all meetings? Or is there public value in us continuing around the table in that work session format?
It really is entirely up to the board. I mean, I think it, it's really more about how you guys want to operate. Betsy, we've got more microphones now. I think the key is always, we all got to speak into the microphones. We got to remember that. So when we're back in person, whether we're at the table or at the dais, but the microphones at the dais work really well. So Betsy, do you have any thoughts there?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we did add additional of those wireless microphones for the tables, but it is a matter of speaking out, making sure it's catching. Whereas at the dais, the microphones are right in front of you.
And I will say when we go to 251 South Street, so that there, the, there's fixed seating in the council chambers planned there. So if we wanted to continue to do like a work session format, we would need to do it in a different room than the council chambers at 251. Or we could just move right to at the dais at every meeting. And if you all want to start that now before we move to 251, that's fine too.
Yeah, I think the idea of everybody sitting around and having a conversation and having it be more like a fireside chat was a great idea. So, so whatever board made that, you know, kind of effort to, to make that happen, I think it was good. I just think the, the ability in today's day and age to do everything via video and streaming and really get the message across, it's just not going to. A great idea on paper. I'd love for us to find ways to, to do more fireside chats. You know, I mean, I think what we tried to do pre-COVID was, Betsy, I think it set up like 15 different meetings for us to go have that type of dialogue in each one of the neighborhoods. And I hope that we can, we can roll that back out as well and get that going. And maybe that solves, solves the issue there, but I'm. And maybe that solves, solves the issue there. But I'm, I'm, I'm okay sitting at the dais. Um, knowing that it, it probably was causing more harm than good to, to do the, the round table, but the, the thought was there for sure.
I concur. At a minimum, at the table, you had two, if not three commissioners with their backs to the camera, which, you know, some folks rely on being able to see folks as they speak, which again, it's still difficult with that, but I, I recommend dais. Um, and I think the folks that show up in person realize that, you know, there is that ability to, to engage and talk. You know, before and after meetings, should there need to be, you know, to be able to do that. But I completely concur. Understand how they were initially came about. In fact, as we know, they weren't even in the town hall. They weren't in the boardroom. Um, and then they transitioned into being there. So I, I vote dais.
Does anybody feel differently about going back to in-person meetings?
Go ahead.
Would appreciate knowing what is meant by the honor system.
Yes, or the, uh, what the governor's order and kind of CDC recommendation really was that how do you differentiate between vaccinated and unvaccinated and that there, there is no national system or any state system of identifying folks, um, and, and any way to check that. So I think all the guidance with the CDC and the governor's order was made based on, okay, we're, we understand that this is going to be in, in honor system situation where folks that are vaccinated, we're expecting to, it's okay to not wear your mask. And the folks that are unvaccinated should are recommended to wear a mask. And that's just the way that, that they understood it to be. So that was the guidance that we've gotten. And that's, that's really is the honor system that we were comfortable kind of falling in line.
Jamie, there's some good signage already out in town, and I don't know whether this is another thing for us to follow up on. But several businesses and locations that essentially say, if you are fully vaccinated, you may enter without a mask. If you are not, please wear a mask. So it's, it's not, it's not an honor system that requires you to know that that's what we're asking. It's clearly delineated at the entrance to the facility. So I don't know, Jim, whether that helps at all. And then one other thing to just tag along to that is I'd like to actually get the feedback from our boards. If for any reason we have board members who, you know, who don't feel comfortable, I don't know that I want to sit here and direct somebody who might be immunocompromised and sitting on one of our boards. And what we've said is that, you know, trying to do a hybrid doesn't work. So I'd like us to be comfortable in saying that if livability board or affordable housing board comes back to us and says, you know, we have a board member who is immunocompromised and does not feel comfortable meeting in person, that we would give those boards that flexibility to continue meeting virtually as long as that is.
Is that a, is that a potentially is a, an acceptable path, Jamie?
On the first point.
Go ahead, Jim.
On the first point, I think the signage would be, uh, important. I, I think it is a heroic assumption to think that everybody would simply know without being reminded. I am thinking, uh, uh, of, of a local college with a pretty tight honor system. And every time a student finishes a test, uh, she has to write on there, I certify that I neither gave nor received any help on this test. It, it does have a way of reminding about the seriousness of the issue.
I think that's a great point, and we can enhance the signage that we have at town hall now, and we can make sure that's pretty robust for the board meetings.
And, and Rusty, this is the, you know, several months ago, when we did the donate life proclamation, if y'all haven't seen the news, roughly forty-six percent of transplant recipients who have received two vaccinations, a recent, um, uh, study showed that they do, they had zero antibodies. And so there is now a full-blown press to figure out, um, you know, there, most of them are obviously on immunosuppressant on drugs following transplantation. But, you know, it is not out of the scope to believe that we have somebody on one of our boards who may be in that situation. And if they have no resistance, um, and no antibodies built up, I, I do not want to be asking them to go into a place, even if they're wearing a mask and that we would have to be relying on, you know, the honor system. That's why I'm asking for that flexibility.
Right. Jimmy, my, my, my question then, as far as directive, say, for some of the, the ancillary boards, if you will, i- if, if someone is immunocompromised, do they phone in or does that entire board end up staying on the Zoom platform?
That's a good point. They can, they could do the phone in. So kind of thinking back to the way we operated previously, as long as that physical quorum was in the room, similar with the town board, there is that option to call in and still participate in the board meeting. So that, that could apply with the town board, and that could also happen with the advisory boards. So that is an option for uh, someone who's immunocompromised. And I, I guess the other thought here is yes, you could just say, we're going to, we, the town board are going to go to in-person meetings and you could leave it to the advisory boards to decide whether to go in-person or virtual. I think that what you could run into is criticism there of some, some are, some aren't. And, you know, just the complaints about that. So to, to us, it was kind of like, well, let's, let's all go the same route. And then that way, we're, we're all in that same place and are moving forward that way. But at, at the end of the day, you could leave it to your advisory boards and let them decide.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm personally of the mindset that we need to go back in person. I mean, I, I, I think it's time. I think there, 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 there are no major fires that are the driver more than the fact that we, the business of town government has been conducted for over a year virtually. And we are, we are well within compliance of the governors and the CDC's directives uh, to go back in person. I just think it, it behooves us to go back in person. Pants or no pants, Matthew? So.
Well, let me be clear, always wearing pants, just, uh, just the dress pants. Uh, if anybody has any fourteen-day mask diet, uh, I'm, I'm open to suggestions, just to, you know, a couple inches off the waistline, you know?
Follow the mayor's advice. I just ordered larger pants.
Towards all of the boards going back, um, recognizing that if there's any particular uh, concern about any individual about immunocompromised position or something like that, that we are flexible in, um, in dealing with that on an individual basis.
Agreed. If there's a medical reason, then we should honor that and respect that.
David, where are you on this?
In agreement.
Okay. All right. So I don't think this is an action item. I think this is a directive to staff and to Betsy. Get that room cleaned up. We're coming back.
Yes, I'm, I'm hearing a majority, a majority of the board is wanting to go back to in-person meetings. And is it, it'd be June eighth. So I'll just throw that there the next meeting. And that the advisory boards would, would follow suit unless there's a kind of a medical situation that can't be, really, to me, it can't be resolved without phoning in to participate or some other way to kind of accommodate. We just kind of take that on a advisory board, but by advisory board basis. Did I capture what you all want us to do?
Yes, I think so. And also maybe plug Mary Ann in, in case there's any HIPAA situation that, um, I wouldn't want someone to feel uncomfortable because of that.
Good point.
We got head nods around the board. Thumbs up, any one of those things, flag. Again, it's not an action item, but I think, okay, we're good.
Okay, we'll start getting ready for that start June eighth.
Can't wait. I just don't think I can put a tie on again, y'all. I'm sorry. It's been too long. I might wear a suit, but there's going to be no tie anymore. So, um, who knows? All right, let's move on to item number five, which is public comment. And I'm going to turn to town clerk, Nancy Shores, for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We have received one public comment that I will read. The first comment was received via email on Friday, May twenty-first from Steve Sonnenberg. If at any future time, the proposed non-discrimination ordinance comes up for BOC consideration, the public must first be provided its actual text for review. Only then we can make an informed choice on whether or not to support it. The public must be able to evaluate its purpose and scope as well as its investigatory and enforcement processes and how it will integrate into the town's code ordinances. Any proposed non-discrimination ordinance must be clear and unambiguous, make sense, and meet an actual defined and documented public need. Why is an actual ordinance text so important? Let us look to our town's fair housing ordinance, for example. In this ordinance, we can find text that raises curious issues and questions of legality that should cause the BOC to reevaluate its necessity, at least as it is currently written. This ordinance establishes from the town's perspective, what is discriminatory behavior related to real estate transactions, a good thing on its face. Per this ordinance, the county handles all filing, review, investigation, and enforcement actions related to an alleged violation. Our ordinance gives our town absolutely no role, no oversight, and no say in anything to do with its violations or enforcement. Our ordinance gives our public no additional protections beyond those already provided by the county. So why doesn't our town just rely on the comparable county ordinance, which also fully applies to and protects our town residents? Our ordinance is simply virtue signaling. Does Davidson even have the legal authority to task the county to do all of our town's ordinances mandated actions? And get this, our ordinance does not even require our town to be notified if a violation complaint is filed with the county. If you keep this ordinance, rewrite it to reflect oversight, investigation, and enforcement authorities for the town vice the county. Also, in our ordinance's purpose, it states that it applies, quote, for execution within the county, quote, and secures freedom from discrimination, quote, for all individuals within the county. Town ordinances apply, only apply within the town of Davidson's boundaries. What gives our town the authority to enact an ordinance covering the whole county and everyone there? And how is this even legal? If you keep it, rewrite this ordinance to protect the rights of all individuals and legal entities within the town, not for all individuals within the county. Thank you. And that concludes public comment, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And that, that, uh, Steve, I appreciate that comment. This is an ongoing discussion that we are having and continue to have. And, uh, there'll be more on that at a later date. So thank you. So at this point in the agenda, we move to public hearing. And we're going to call on Finance Manager, uh, Finance Director Pete Swart in a minute to talk about the budget. During this public hearing, this is a presentation that Pete is going to be making later in the agenda. This board will be discussing the budget. So at this time, uh, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Can I confirm just which one? Because there are two listings for the general statute. We want to reference the general statute under six A.
Yes.
So this would be a, that we would whole, open a public hearing on proposed FY twenty twenty-one budget per North Carolina General Statute one fifty-nine dash twelve B and public hearing on proposed economic development expenditures per North Carolina General Statute one fifty-eight dash seven point one.
So Mayor Pro Tim Campbell has made the motion to open the public hearing based on what she just read. Uh, I'll need to do a roll call at this time. Commissioner Sitten.
Yes.
Commissioner Fuller.
Yes.
Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Campbell. Okay, the public hearing is now open. At this point, I will turn to our Finance Director, Pete Swart.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, on my screen, uh, the screen is black, so I'm not exactly sure if my camera is working or not. Um, so I'm guessing that it's not. And I'm really hoping that I'm going to be able to share my screen in a moment. So I'm grateful from the smiles that you can see my screen. Um, I am going to move quickly, uh, through a, a summary of our, uh, of our previously presented budget, um, including a budget development strategy, uh, our general fund budget, our capital improvement plan, some of our other funds, uh, and where we're headed. And then we will also, uh, cover the economic development, uh, portion of the, uh, of the discussion that is required by state statute. You'll recall that these were some of the priorities that we had identified, restoring COVID nineteen, accomplishing those strategic goals, retaining our talented workforce. Uh, you'll recall, we also are not recommending an increase to the tax rate, uh, while still, the, covering the debt service on the geo bond issue, which we will discuss later on this evening. You'll recall that the manager's recommended budget includes a balanced budget. Additionally, our thirteen and a half million dollar general fund budget is an overall increase of five point six percent with no change to the ad valorem tax rate. Ad valorem revenue is increasing by seven point two percent over the FY twenty-one revenue. Um, and sales and use tax is an overall increase of six point nine percent and a three percent increase over where we project, uh, the total FY twenty twenty-one collections will be. Operating budget does include over a million dollars to offset future debt service as well as restore many of the prior year's budget adjustments for COVID nineteen, including many town events, some travel, uh, as well as, uh, other contributions. Our five-year capital improvement plan is just under twenty-five million dollars. And you'll recall that we are also recommending, uh, a funding of six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for the community investment fund to move forward many of the items that are included in the capital improvement plan. Our solid waste budget is just under one point one million dollars and includes no increase to any fees. So our two hundred and one dollar single family fee will continue as well as a sixty-dollar multifamily. The stormwater budget, based on our historical, uh, collections, we have increased this from two hundred and fifty to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The affordable housing fund budget at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, includes a hundred and forty thousand dollars of down payment assistance, uh, as well as seventy thousand for critical home repairs. So in red, you see the items that that's where we are today. We are held, holding our public hearing, which is required by state statute, as well as a public hearing on economic development expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year. We will also later on this evening, review the budget, uh, and take, uh, we have a couple of issues that we'll review with you at that point. And we are hopeful that we will be ready to approve, uh, the budget ordinance on the June eighth board meeting. Um, we definitely have our virtual public hearing tonight to receive resident feedback. And also our email at budget@townofdavidson.org is available. Uh, and we will provide those emails to the board, uh, if we receive any additional. So as I mentioned, North Carolina General Statute requires that all municipalities hold a public hearing on all economic development budgeted expenditures, the total proposed economic development. The total proposed economic development budget for F Y twenty twenty-two is just over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And you can see, this is a listing of the major expenditures that are going to be made for economic development expenditures in the upcoming year. With that, I am going to try to get my camera working while the, uh, while the public hearing takes place.
Thank you, Pete. And this time, I'm going to turn to, uh, Town Clerk Betsy Shores for any public comment, uh, that has come in on this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. We received two comments related to the F Y twenty-two budget hearing. The first was received via email on Friday, March twenty first, from Steve Sonnenberg. On its page eight, the twenty twenty-two manager recommended budget booklet five twenty-five twenty twenty-one discusses a budget item to make the town's code of ordinances gender neutral. Taking this action would provide no value added to better protect our public, fill a critical community infrastructure shortfall, or enhance the lives of our citizens. Thus, it would be more beneficial to use these funds to actually help someone, such as for raise bonuses or equipment for policemen or firefighters. This budget item is a waste of taxpayer money, is political correctness on a mooc, and is a blatant attempt to impose a liberal, quote, woke philosophy and rhetoric on all town residents, a great many of whom are not politically liberal or progressive and do not agree with this kind of wokeness. Thus, this must not be done. Remember, the B O C represents all town residents, not just the progressive left. Therefore, the town's budget should represent all town residents. This budget item does not do this. Thank you. The second public comment was received via email on Monday, May twenty-fourth, from Dan Ryan. Pete, please publicly comment on the two hundred and twenty-nine thousand expenditure under equity and inclusion for the recommended F Y twenty-two budget. I'm curious what this line item will cover specifically. And Mayor, that concludes the public comments receiver of the hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, a- as I said earlier, we are gonna discuss the budget, uh, later in this meeting. So, um, Pete, thank you for your presentation. Thank the two citizens for their public input. Jane, go ahead.
I just had a question, because Pete shared one of us two emails that were sent this afternoon to the budget address, and I just wondered what was our differentiation in terms of citizens' comments? Why were those, um, public comment and the emails that Pete shared this afternoon not? I just want to have that clarification out here, so that if either of those two individuals that sent the email to that, why their comments are not being heard?
Well, we-
Answer that, or Jamie, if you want to.
Go ahead, Betsy.
I was just gonna say, historically, it's because when we have the budget public hearings in person, it's for people to come and speak, and we have offered that email address as an alternate way to ask questions to staff. And so we have not historically included those comments in the budget public hearings.
Is there any harm to doing so in light of, you know, us not spelling that out? I completely understand if we were in person, where we would break that out, but I, I did, I'm, I'm one of five.
We didn't advertise it that way, so I would be hesitant to include those comments now.
Okay.
If not advertised that way.
Jane, one of them was a former commissioner, so if he didn't know how to get the, uh, public comment in the right spot, then I'd love to hear that information.
I, at this point, I'm gonna make a motion to close this public hearing. As I said earlier, we will be discussing the budget shortly.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Can you, um, does she have to read it as it's written to close? Autumn, if you would read.
Close it.
We can just close it? Commissioner Michael has made a motion to close the public hearing. I'll do a roll call at this time. Commissioner Fuller.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sitten.
Yes.
Mr. Michael.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is closed. We move on now to consent, item seven. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Rusty.
Yes, sir.
Rusty.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I wanna follow up on, on Jane's point. I, I think if somebody sends in a comment, I, I don't want to use a technical reason to, uh, in effect, kick it out. And so my suggestion would be that we carry those forward to the next meeting, and that we make sure that each of us sees it. And if, uh, if, uh, citizen wants to comment publicly at the next meeting, we do so, or allow them to do so. And, and that we clarify this point, so we're not in this position again.
Hey, Jim, we're, we're, we're going in for a discussion on the budget, and so I'll just read them out loud as emails during the discussion period.
And I just, I just wanted to make sure that if they were sitting here listening, I haven't looked at the additional attendees, that if they had sent that email, thinking that they were making public comment. I, I agree that how it was labeled, I was just worried that they might feel that we had not received their emails or were not including them in that.
And they've gotten an acknowledgement email that we have received, and it would send it on to you all for consideration. So they have already received that email. And Commissioner Ford, we can absolutely talk about it during the, during the next part of the agenda on the budget.
If the board would like to have additional public comment received at the next meeting, we need to advertise it that way.
That's right, because we don't, we don't have public comment in our work session. So-
And especially for being specific to the budget, I want to make sure we're following statute clearly.
No, it's a good point, Betsy. Jim, are you, are you comfortable with not kicking it forward if we're gonna discuss it during the discussion?
Absolutely.
Sounds good.
All right, let me circle back then. Item number seven is our consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with items A through F as listed on the agenda.
Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tim Campbell. I will do a roll call. Commissioner Fuller.
Yes.
Commissioner Ford. You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Sitten.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Campbell.
Yes.
Consent agenda carries. Now we move on to item number eight, and the first item on, item number eight, A, is to discuss fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. I'm gonna defer first to Town Manager Jamie Justice. He will be followed, or accompanied by Assistant Town Manager Karen Witcher and Finance Director Pete Swart. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if Pete's got his, uh, camera work, doesn't look like it, but we do have a couple slides of some additional information based on the board's feedback from the last meeting. So we wanted to touch on that information and then just open it up for you all to discuss. So Pete, I think we're ready to launch into that. We can't hear you, Pete.
Pete, we can see you on the one video, but can't hear you, but we could hear you on the video that we can't, couldn't see you. You're logged in twice.
Betsy, we save the best for last.
All the more reason to return in person.
So I've, uh, I've logged in now with my camera, and I'm also logged in with the computer. And unfortunately, I tried to reset my computer, so I'm having to reopen everything. So I apologize that we're gonna take half a second, um, to pull up the presentation.
What's that country song that you're gonna miss this? Betsy's not gonna miss this, I don't think.
I, I stand behind my statement that no good meeting ever happens without a technology issue. So we're off to a great start, and, uh, thank you, thank you, Pete, for, for making sure that it's gonna be a great meeting.
When the history of this time period is written, the, the title of the chapter is going to be, uh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that, or, or you're on mute.
According in progress.
Okay, sorry about that.
Pete, just skip the video. We love seeing your, your joyful face, but, but I think we can, we can live without the video if that's causing the problems.
Well, I'm not sure which shade of red I am right now.
And Pete, now we're getting feedback from your other phone.
That's because he's logged on twice.
It should be good now. Go for it, Pete, but you gotta unmute that one.
Hey, how's this?
Nope.
Does this work? Okay, I've got it. I'm gonna work through this, and I hope nobody has any questions. We definitely have an interesting issue. Um, so our fee schedule changes that you requested that we take a look at will cover two of our payment and lose. And then Jamie will discuss, uh, some C I P changes that we talked about, and then we'll be, uh, open to, um, further discussion regarding any other items that the board would like to review. In regard to the change in the affordable housing payment and lieu, uh, we, what we've looked at was the S and P Case Schiller Home Price Index for the Charlotte region. Uh, we looked at this increase since the last revaluation in December thirty-first of twenty nineteen. That showed a fifteen point eight two five percent increase within the Charlotte region, which would result in an increase to the affordable housing payment and lieu. It would go from about thirty-five thousand dollars to almost forty-one thousand dollars, uh, per required, uh, unit. As we were looking through and, uh, looking at this analysis, we said, does it make any sense that we might propose to increase the required open space payment in lieu as well? If we was, if we did do this increase of fifteen point eight two five percent, um, you can see that that would result, uh, in some increases at each tier, uh, of the, um, of the open space payment in lieu. So, we, uh, we would like to have some guidance from the board as to what direction to head, uh, with regard, um, to increasing, uh, both of these fees on the fee schedule.
Yes, I, I, I think we should do it. I think you've got it tied to an index. The one thing I'd, I'd love for you guys to do, I don't know if we have enough time at this point in time, but as we go into the, the acreage calculator, I'd go back and look at the last, you know, five or ten sales. Rusty, you tell me what you do from a comp standpoint, and look at the average price paid per acre, because I think you're still, um, you're way under. I mean, an acre of land for sixty-eight grand, you tell me where that is, and I'll buy it in Davidson.
It's, the smaller tract acreage, it's gonna bring more money naturally. When you're looking fifty acres plus, somewhere in that fifty-five to sixty-five thousand dollar range is about market right now. I know of a couple parcels that are under contract just south of seventy thousand dollars an acre, that are larger tracts. So, uh, they're, they're, those numbers are not far off. Now, I will tell you this. There's only a couple tracts that are over a hundred acres in existence in Davidson, and I can promise you, those aren't gonna go for thirty-nine thousand dollars an acre if they ever sell. The, the other ones, um, the, 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 the next fifty acre number is a little low. The other two were kind of in line with the market right now.
Also, it depends, Rusty, right on whether or not it's got sewer and water to it.
Well, there's still some land bankers out there that are, that are gonna buy and sit on it with anticipation of water, and so we're at some point, uh, which is-
I'm just saying, and I don't know what Matt was referring to, but I mean, we, we know that it doubles. Basically, it doubles the, the value on, on sewer and water to it. So, Matt, if you, you know, if you've got an acre that's got sewer and water, then it's, it's eighty grand, and if it doesn't, it's forty grand.
I, I think if you have an acre that has sewer and water, it's four hundred grand right now. That's the point I'm trying to make. So you can, you can cut that in half all you want. I mean, I guess, again, I, I think I, I mentioned this before on the open space, and I don't want us to go down a rabbit hole on it tonight. I think raising it, this is fine. I think it's okay. But I, I would either tie it to that specific contract in terms of what the price per acre was, so that it's, it's real time, or I'd go back and look at a better way to cut this up, because you're just, you're way under biased on the cost per acre. You're incentivizing the wrong behavior with this fee schedule.
The only other thing that I would add is, and Matthew, I think we were both talking about it the last time, is that while if we did this for, and this is for the payment and lieu affordable housing, that if we tried to match it to an index that we did an annual, but that we would be asking to level set then every time we do a county valuation. So that's normally eight years. I think we're doing it in four years. But I just didn't see that language in here, and, and that's what I know that I was talking about, was just not having that big of a gap, um, in between changing those numbers. So if we have that language, I think that would be helpful to make sure that folks know that we would, we would be tying it back and level setting at, at a different, you know, at a regular periodicity.
Yeah, that's exactly what's proposed.
Yeah, recalibrate at, for your revaluation increment, intervals. And I do the same thing on the acreage. I mean, if it's, if it's possible, like I said, I, I don't know. I, I, I probably just say tie it directly into whatever that lot price is, if you can even manage it that way, right? So then Rusty, if you're buying a smaller parcel of land, if you're buying forty acres and you're paying seventy thousand, uh, an acre for it, it's seventy thousand an acre. If you're buying a, a large pro, parcel and you're paying forty thousand an acre, then it's forty thousand an acre, and it, and it's directly attributed to the fair market value of that property, because as we know, all properties are different.
Yep. Yeah, I think we would need some more time to analyze a different way to do it. I think we would propose it just to take the structure and, and add the, add the index multiplier to what was there, but we can certainly delve deeper into looking at it differently going forward.
Yeah, agreed. Like I said, I don't, I don't, I don't think we have enough time to solve for it this time around, but I'd like, I've asked for it before. I'm asking again, I'd really like to see a recommendation next time, a different, different option that raises these up, because again, we're incentivizing the, the way wrong behavior.
All right, any other thoughts here on these two fee changes that if y'all are in agreement with? We could have that ready for the next meeting. Any other comments or thoughts here?
No, sir, not for me.
Okay, here it done. We'll move on to the, to the C I P. So at the last meeting, there was discussion about that roundabout at, uh, East Rocky River, Davidson Concord Road. And could we figure out a way to do some beautification there? We'd had some citizen feedback on that. So what we did as staff, as we, uh, got with Project Manager Doug Wright, and we started thinking about what we could do there. It is a N C D O T control roundabout, and there'd been discussion in the past about beautifying. So you guys are on the right track in terms of, we need to do something there. And we do, we do have, uh, funds, uh, proposing a C I P for the Exit Thirty project for landscaping there. And so in consulting with the project manager, we did think that the roundabout at East Rocky River is smaller and a little more straightforward, and that we could, uh, what we could do is we could develop a project and take to N C D O T, and there's a chance that we could get them to approve it, and we get an encroachment agreement, which is what we'd have to get to be able to do landscaping, plantings this fall. So there's a chance we could do it if we put that on a separate track from the Exit Thirty projects. A lot rides on D O T, working with us on that, and we make, make it happen. If not, then it would have to really fall to, fall, fall to fall of twenty twenty-two. Uh, a lot rides on DOT working with us on that and we make make it happen. If not, then it would have to really fall to fall fall to fall of twenty twenty two. To do the plantings, but it's a very basic, small inner uh roundabout. We're not talking about brick or signage. It really would just be beautification plantings there. That will be allowable under DOT. So our thought was to advance that in next year's budget in the CIP. We would have put twenty thousand dollars to that and that would help us to design it, get through the permitting and then actual do the plantings. So I think that's up on the higher end of the estimate, just to give you a sense of, we feel like we can get it underneath that. And what we would propose to pay for that would be to take ten thousand of that from the exit thirty project. Because I think that would leave us enough money to design what we need there with the forty thousand that's left and then ten thousand from the. What we were looking at was those sustainable streetlights and that that that's how we could fund that twenty thousand for that roundabout uh landscaping. Our thinking on the streetlights is we're gonna go through a process to really kind of engage the public on what we could do there. Duke has already. It's changing out these streetlights. And so that was a way for us to accelerate getting those done if we paid for some of that. Or we could uh let Duke pay for that, but I think our thinking was, hey, let's go through the process. And if there is a real desire from the community and the town board to accelerate that, we can always come back to you to amend the budget if we felt like we needed more funds. So that was our thought process into how we grabbed the other, the twenty thousand from those two areas to move that forward in the CIP. Any any questions or comments about that?
I'm okay as long as there's the asterisk out there that says, you know, the streetlights. You know, we're we're okay moving it from the the general fund in the future cuz I think it is important. I mean, you know, some of them are purple, some of them are white hot blue and um, you know, they're just all over the place. And it just it just does not look good driving down the streets at night and it's definitely not environmentally friendly. One other question as we're talking about partnering with NCDOT, how much are those hawk um beacons? Approximately.
Uh, let's see. Uh Karen, I'm I'm checking my memory, Pete, you may have it. Uh, let's see. Is that the is that the seven hundred and fifty thousand that we are doing in the with the two thousand seventeen bonds?
It is. Let me go pull up that number exactly, Jamie. I don't remember off the top of my head.
That may be high, but uh, Chris or Ford, that's the full blown doing the hawk at the roundabouts, which is which is there's a lot of infrastructure there with that. So if you're looking for like a, hey, what's a hawk per cost, I think it may be different depending on the location.
Yeah. Yes, because of electrical and all that stuff.
So where I'm going with this is how many crosswalks do we have that cross the road at forty five miles an hour?
I do know of the one on East Rocky River Road where the Greenway crosses and I cannot think. Of another one at forty five off the top of my head.
So I'm really, I'm really worried about that intersection as from a safety standpoint, you're validating my thoughts, which is there's only one crosswalk where. It's forty five miles an hour across and there's a lot of kids that cross over there. Plus, we're 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 gonna put that green wave and further up. Uh, north to Fisher Farm and I think it's gonna continue to get more use. So I'd like us to take some funds out of that capital allocation and and put it in for. Some sort of significant crosswalk. I mean, you the one you're going forty five miles an hour, you're coming down a hill. So you're picking up speed, coming the other way. It's people coming in from Concord slash Mooresville, just depending on where you're coming off of Route three. And it goes from fifty, it's 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 a fifty five just before River Run, right? And not everybody slows right down to forty five and then you're coming down around a corner and you're kind of blind into it. I I think it's a real safety issue. And I know that this board is has been really supportive of safety concerns with gray road sidewalk and some of the other stuff. So I'd like us to allocate whatever funding is necessary there uh to to alleviate the safety issue that we have with that crosswalk.
And Commissioner Ford, you saying if, well, we've we've made the request to NCDOT to pay for putting that in, what you're saying is if they won't do it, then let's allocate some funds for the town to pay for.
Yeah, I mean, unless you feel that there's a high degree of probability that NCDOT is gonna pony up the money. Then I'm happy to wait, but I have never, ever, ever seen that.
Well, if you look at some of those things, I mean, just the depending on where there are some of the the budget shortfall kind of things. And I don't know that it would meet that criteria. The next budget um shortfall call they announced is for August. That would then have decisions by October and those are for the smaller projects, et cetera, that then might have a eighty twenty match. Um, so I mean, that's that's to me, that's more likely the budgetary place where that's gonna come out of if if it could qualify. And it might actually be able to qualify underneath a bike ped um framework, simply because it is essentially. A signal for a bike ped facility that's crossing a roadway. So you might be able to hit them up in a couple of different manners. Matty, to your point, if we could get an eighty twenty, but you're right, if if we can get a window on that to see whether one, it would be an acceptable submission. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for I'm all for trying to get somebody else to pay for it, but I'd rather put it in the budget formally so that if it's if. NCDOT isn't paying for it. I mean, we're waiting on a lot of things, right? We're waiting on the partnership with Met County on the Greenway between Summers Walk and River Run. We're waiting, we're waiting, we're waiting. Um, and I think that, you know, all you need to wait is one day too long. And it's some kid riding their bike across and somebody's doing fifty five miles an hour down that road and um. Waiting for that eighty twenty match isn't gonna be um worth it to those parents.
Got it.
And I I tend to agree with Matthew. I think at the end of the day, with discussions that are being had right now, we we potentially are a thousand feet away. From connecting Fisher Farm to the Greenway at at near a passage. Uh, I know there's some ongoing discussions with some landowners out there, but I I think we're getting close enough where I, you know, hopefully. In the next calendar year, that connection is made. So you can go from Abasham and Fisher Farm all the way through uh to town, come into River Run and then go all the way through to town, back and forth. So um, I I tend to agree with Matthew that if we've got to take steps, Jamie, to move that up. It it would be money well spent at this time. And I I'll say this, I'm not sure if a hawk beacon, that's the flashing red, make make cars come to a stop there. I'm not sure if DOT would approve that. I think we were thinking, what were the flashing yellow? Like, hey, up ahead is the Greenway Crossing and then it's already got the uh flashing beacon crossing there at the Greenway. So that that's what we were gonna ask NCDOT for. So I I would like to kind of work with them at least a little bit to try to get that figured out. But if the board said, hey, let's put a little bit of money in the CIP for for an improvement like that, I don't know what the dollar amount would be right now, so I'd have to work on that. But we could put some funds there for for an improvement at that at that crossing.
Yeah, I mean, and that's why I was going after the hawk, which is go on the high side, which is what we do on all of our capital projects and then coming in under budget. So I'd rather earmark it at the hawk and then do what what the the right answer is. And and I'm with you, Jamie, on, you know, I I think you and I have talked about it. It's that it's it's another yellow flashing beacon, you know, two hundred feet away that says, hey, somebody pushed the button, start slowing down now. I think that that's probably the best thing, but just go high and then come in favorable, then put it back right where it was gonna go anyways.
Cuz I I think if I'm not mistaken, further up on NC three, just and it's and it's a regular intersection. But they have at least several prepare to stop kind of thing. So maybe that's the signage that would be a trigger in advance. If somebody's pushed the the rapid flashing at the thing that a quarter of a mile down the road. That it would say, prepare to stop, you know, crosswalk ahead or something like that. Realizing that, I think, Jamie, I mean, we're gonna have to push, but you know. Whether they would allow a hawk complete stop on there, um, it's worth asking the question, but.
Yeah, Jen, I I don't know exactly the one you're talking about. The one I was referencing is um like right right where that Walmart intersection is out in Concord. It's it's like a blind, you're going up a hill and when that light goes red, you can't see it and you got the the prepare to stop with the two yellow flashing lights. And it's enough to let you know, hey, you you giving you the right amount of time to stop. And I think that that's the perfect solution on both ends. Um, but but again, I'd rather just go high on it, put it right back where it was gonna go. Cuz again, you pull it out, you come in under, it goes right back to the same bucket.
All right, I guess what I would suggest then is if you give me a little bit of time with our project manager to see, we can come up with a some type of budget number. And then we can come get that, uh, be prepared to talk about that at the next board meeting with y'all before you approve the budget. We can handle it that way. Does that work? Okay, and is everybody, is there anybody in disagreement with amending or the CIP to include that roundabout landscaping that we just discussed?
Nope. Autumn, I think it was great you brought it up. Thank you. Look at that.
All right, we'll adjust the CIP. And I did wanna clarify one thing. When I mentioned ten thousand coming from the sustainable streetlights, that has seventy thousand in it now. So we go from seventy thousand down to sixty thousand. So I didn't want you to think I was zeroing that out or not. So I just wanted to make make that clear, Karen. Is anything you'd add to that?
No, I think that's really good clarification.
Okay. Okay, those are the uh things we wanted to at least bring back to you from the last discussion. And really, we're at the point now, are there any other uh questions or do you need more information? Or are you uh happy with the changes we've discussed and figuring out the crossing there we just talked about? And asking our finance director to prepare a budget ordinance for y'all's approval at the next meeting, Commissioner Ford.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read those two emails for Jim uh if if people don't mind. Uh, I'll 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 leave the names off of it, but why are tax rates not dropping, given the sell sale of continuum, avoiding the loan payments and enjoying the revenue? Stable tax rates are nothing to brag about after offloading continuum. As for federal tax dollar infusion via the Democrats' mismanagement of our national debt, would be best to reject these funds as contributing to the relieving. Debt, tell the Fed, tell the Fed Davidson will pass on this. Three X four exclamation points.
You want me to answer those?
Well, I'll I'll get the other one. Betsy, you do a way better job of reading these than I do, so just kudos to you. As I as I read through the expense detail, my understanding is that the board is asking the citizenry to spend forty thousand dollars on Christmas in Davidson. Twenty thousand or so on a concert series, thirty five thousand for landscaping and zero on affordable housing. I can imagine that there is a plan to spend OPM, other people's money on affordable housing. But I do think that the citizens of Davidson are willing to invest in getting more affordable housing units on the ground. I do not think that this that the budget as proposed reflects these the values of citizens of Davidson. So Jim, there's your two supplemental public comments.
Right, could y'all, would y'all like us to address those?
I I do have a question on one.
I'll go ahead and hit them then. Pete, Karen, y'all jump in. So on the uh American Rescue Plan, those are the federal funds that are coming down. Those funds are still to be determined. So our budget's not built on utilizing any of those funds. The rules and restrictions on those are pretty tight, what we're seeing. And so at this point, we're still trying to figure out what we can and can't do with those funds clearly. And our plan is to bring that back to the board at a later date with some type of plan. And it it'll be up for the board to decide. And I imagine there'll be uh some opportunities for public input. So that's been, that's our strategy on the rescue plan, federal dollars.
By the way, for what it's worth, in my opinion, agree with the American Rescue Plan or not. To cut our nose off despite our face and not take the funding that's available to us is silly. You know, similar to when.
Reason to do that.
Yeah.
And the and the first part of his question was why no changes, you know, why not a tax rate drop? And I think Pete and everybody's addressed that several times is that it's the it's the general obligation bonds and being able to to do that without raising. And that that's the offsetting. So I mean, I think if you go through and listen to most of our discussions, you'll you'll know why. There wasn't some sort of a dramatic drop um with the sale of continuum.
Exactly right. We're using those funds for that.
And I think it's being prudent and smart, paying it upfront so that we're not paying it later to lower taxes, to just then raise them even higher again, to pay more interest on debt. Not the most effective use of taxpayer dollars.
Well, and to Pete's credit and staff's credit, our budget did not figure in any of the rest American Rescue Funds. There is a municipality in North Carolina that was slated to get twenty million dollars and that has been cut to zero. And they planned on that twenty million dollars in their budget. So, yeah, so um, you know, we we uh, what whatever funds we get from the Fed. If we ever can figure out the directive of of how to utilize them, uh, I I I'm in full agreement that we take those funds.
All right, and then the final question I heard is, is we do have our um position, Housing and Equity Director position that's being paid for out of the general fund. To say to say we're not spending general fund money on affordable housing is not correct. Pete, anything you would add or?
No, I think those are great explanations.
It just a just a, so one of the questions in public comment that I believe Dan had asked, it was about, he was asking how the two hundred twenty nine thousand was gonna be spent. Obviously, that's not all salaries. Otherwise, hey, great for, great for him. Um, great for Eugene. But um, wha- what are some of the other things that we have in there? Cuz Karen, I know, I know there's a lot of kind of training and other programs in there. So there there's a lot of really good things in that bucket of money and I and I think now is a good time to to talk through at least a couple of the items, not dollarize them, but talk through them.
Yeah, oh no, that's really a good point, um, Chris or Ford. One of the things that's in that budget, you're exactly right, is the trainings. And those are the community-wide trainings. We've done some in partnership with the college advisory boards, town staff, business community on equity, what it is. What our common share definition is and how do we work towards that racial equity action plan and what does that mean? So that that's a chunk of it. And then another piece of it is something you have asked us to work on, which is the deeper history storytelling. What does that mean? What does that look like? And where the the group started with was what are the specific um family histories? From a genealogic standpoint, for some of our long-term African-American families in town. And there's a cause associated with some of that research. So that's a piece of what Eugene has been working on. Really excited about that. The hope is to go back to about eighteen fifty and really find out um the roots and the connection. And that is intended to be the jumping off point into the broader contextualization that.
You froze, Karen.
I think we got the gist, though.
The 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 second email, so. How how long, Christmas in Davidson and our concerts on the green in particular. We've been funding those for years. This is not a new line item in the budget. Nor was it a line item in the budget in the the previous board or the previous board or the previous board, correct?
That's correct. And Pete, do you wanna give some color on those source of funds there?
Yeah, I will. Um, that Christmas in Davidson, those are um, those are allowing uh the expenditure of those funds. A portion of those funds, that is not a totally subsidized uh um activity in Davidson. There are contributions that are made um from uh businesses that participate as well as. There are also um contributions for some of the activities that folks undertake. So that is not a full uh, that that is the allowance for expenditure. There is also a revenue portion that's associated with Christmas and Davidson as well. Um, if that's helpful.
Pete, does that revenue exceed forty thousand dollars?
I will pull that up. Give me just a second.
And then while Pete's pulling that up, um, are we allowed to use funding from the travel and tourism? To to cover those costs for Christmas in Davidson because it is kind of a, it's definitely tourist.
Yes, and and that's exactly what we do for those town events as well. Um, they are all subsidized um by those prepared foods and occupancy taxes as well.
So they're not coming from the taxpayer money? Directly from Ad Valorem.
It is not coming from Ad Valorem. That is correct.
And that's the way it's been done for a while.
That's correct.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions. I mean, I appreciate the budget package. Always love reading through it and. You know, it's nice to, it's nice to see the addition of Christmas and Davidson in concerts on the green and and seeing those things back in the budget is uplifting for me, not a negative. I see that as us returning to normalcy and being able to go out and talk with your neighbors and 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 it's, they're big, big items to me. That contribute to what is, what makes Davidson. and, and it's, they're big, big items to me that contribute to what is, what makes Davidson unique and special. So I'm excited to see those in the budget.
One other comment with respect to the affordable housing piece, that in addition to the personnel expenditures in the budget related to that, there's also budgeted items related to critical repairs, et cetera. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have about $70,000 related to critical repairs on homes.
And that focused on the naturally occurring affordable housing.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Autumn, I think the point that, that that individual was trying to make there was that was coming from the Affordable Housing Fund, which is generated by the payment in lieu versus ad valorem. So I interpreted the email as more of a request to spend ad valorem tax dollars on affordable housing versus just from payment alone.
I think that's a fair reading of it. You know, my, my footnote is that I, I really enjoy reviewing all the things we provide. And, and I think, I, I think we, we have a cornucopia of things and work very hard to try to keep the tax rate relatively flat. It's, it's, it's not an exact science, but I, I think on balance, we've done a pretty good job in recent years. Concerts on the Green is something that, in my view, is important to our community. Christmas and Davidson, the mayor's dinner out. Those, that, those types of things are an important part of the small and wonderful town in which we live.
Agreed, Jim.
Pete, did I finally stump you and give you a question that, that was hard to answer?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. You were waiting on the event sponsorship amount from Christmas and Davidson, correct?
Correct.
Yep, $20,000 in vendor fees. And then I believe there's some additional money that's wrapped up in special events. So I believe it's $25,000 to $30,000 of that amount that's subsidized by various fees.
Perfect. Well worth the, the, the small investment from the travel and tourism bucket of money.
Agreed.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions for Pete at this time? If not, Pete, thank you so much.
Lots of hard and good work, Pete.
Well, thanks very much. I, I, we will also be adjusting the budget for a new webcam for me. Just, so you might see just a slight adjustment there. I apologize for those earlier technical difficulties, but it sounds like we worked through everything. So we appreciate your support, and we'll move forward with getting that ordinance ready to go for you to consider approval on June 8th. So we appreciate you again. And yes, there has been quite a bit of hard work from management team at, at all. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Pete.
Yeah, Pete, if you, if you want a new webcam, certainly welcome. I, I support you getting one. That being said, we'll be back in person on June 8th. So if you're having visual issues at that point in time, that's a whole separate thing that we need to talk about.
Okay, we move on. Item B under old businesses, consider approval of resolution 2021-11, guaranteed maximum price for public facilities renovations. I'm going to turn this over to Assistant Town Manager Karen Witcher.
Thank you, Mayor. And my internet has come back just in time on this meeting where all the things are happening with Zoom. As y'all move back to in-person at your next meeting. But this agenda item, I don't have a lengthy presentation or PowerPoint. What this is, is the very exciting step of the project where you all accept the guaranteed maximum price to renovate 251 South Street for Town Community Center and the current Town Hall for Public Safety Building. That target price that we have worked very hard with Edifice to establish is $12.5 million. With issuing the bonds at a premium, that will allow you to reimburse all the soft costs, pay for the, what's in the FFE budget, or the furniture, final finishings, all that, and get the, the buildings done on budget, which is very exciting. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's really where we are, and that's where we are in this, the state of the process.
So I did commercial construction for.
Karen, that was a very helpful memo you sent.
Thank you.
To, to, to do what you and the risk management people have done to this point, particularly given the, the, the fact that materials, lumber, for example, is up 212%, just lumber. So, you know, if you figure copper, aluminum, steel, masonry, labor, trying to find trades and everything else, to, to, to have looked at these two projects and bring them in within $300,000 of our initial budget is, is just unfounded. I mean, it, it literally, with, with the, the way the trend was going, I knew that you were going to come back to us and say we were at 14 plus, easy. And, and, and to be where we're at, I'm, I'm just jumping up and down. So I, I, again, this is one of those, I'll go back to my comments early on. I can't thank you enough, Karen, because I know you watched all this thing for us, and, and, and I'll be forever grateful for the fact that you spent hours working with Edifice and their team to, to help facilitate this point where we're at right now, and I can't thank you enough.
Thank you. It's a really, really great project. It truly is.
Any other?
You have to come back to the dedication.
I will be there. If y'all have me, I will be there.
Yeah, I think we can definitely be happy that we're using an existing facility for all the reasons that, that Rusty mentioned in terms of, you know, costs and stuff like that. But again, kudos, because even as mentioned with the trades and everything else, that this could have, this could have been way different. But thank you for, for doing that hard work in advance. So.
A good point, Jane. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, this is an action item, and I'm going to need someone to make a motion to approve the resolution as, as it is written, please.
I move to approve resolution 2021-11 for the GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price for the Public Facilities Renovations.
Commissioner Michael has made the motion. I'll do a roll call at this time. Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuller?
Yes.
Commissioner Sitten?
Yes.
And Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
That's awesome, y'all. Thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Great. Thanks, y'all.
All right, we move on. Number C, Consider Approval of Resolution 2021-12, Geo Bond Issuance and Approval of Capital Projects Fund for the Geo Bond Projects and Soft Cost Reimbursement. I'm going to turn this now over to our Finance Director Pete Swart, and hopefully, look at him. There you are. Welcome, Pete.
Glad to be here, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen again. So you recall a month ago, we presented many of these topics. And we're going to recover a few of the, of the very similar slides to what we covered last ti, last time, updated for our final numbers. We'll cover a debt issuance activities and timeline. We'll talk about a bond rating, and then also the summary of our projects with the projected cost. Take a quick look at the financial model, and then ask you to consider approval of a resolution to move forward with issuing general obligation bonds. As you can see, here we are this evening. You have already approved that GMP. So as I just mentioned, the next item will be to look at the, consider the approval of the resolution. Starting tomorrow, we will look to issue a notice of sale and preliminary official statement for the, for the sale. This actual sale will take place, and the bonds will be priced on June 8th. We will develop, distribute that final official statement, and then we will actually receive the funds on June 29th for the issuance of our geo bonds. So our bond rating process was very successful. Jamie and I were talking this afternoon that five years ago, as we started looking at, at issuing bonds, he said the key to making this successful is the formation of a good team. And I think we certainly did that with the addition, not only the relationships we formed with the LGC, but also the addition of First Tryon to the team. And we were very happy to receive on Monday word from S and P that we had received a AAA bond rating for the town of Davidson. We are, and I confirmed this with the LGC today, we are the smallest municipality in the state of North Carolina with a AAA bond rating. So this is fantastic news. And Moody's also came back with a double A1 rating. That's just a tick down from their version of a AAA rating. However, we, we are very happy with this outcome from our geo bond ratings and the meetings that we had with those rating agencies. It's truly a testament to all the pieces that have gone into us working through this process, up to and including, most certainly, many of your decisions with regard to the budget and utilizing fund balance and retaining a significant amount of fund balance, as well as having the dollars available to offset our future debt. So this is really, this is a tremendous, when we saw that number come in, I'm, I'm, you may have heard some quarks popping and some celebration at Town Hall, but really a tremendous, tremendous good news that that bond rating is at AAA. You'll recall that we've discussed what our total cash proceeds needs and the bonds that we will be issuing. So we are at right about $19.5 million of proceeds to cover those public facility, mobility, greenways, and parks projects per the 2017 and 2019 geo bond order. As I just mentioned, we do have about $3.9 million available for future debt service. This is why we feel like we will, not only in addition to that million dollars a year that you've designated out of the general fund towards this debt service, we also have supplement of 3.9 million, which will enable us to not have to increase the ad valorem tax rate. For some of our debt service assumptions, that interest rate, that tick rate of 1.78% is definitely advantageous for us to issue debt at this time. And the most important pieces from the financial model that we've run, as I mentioned, no tax increase. We will be reimbursing some of those soft costs to the Community Investment Fund, as well as $275,000 for that downtown gathering space expenditures for Phase 1. And then we'll also reimburse those public facilities costs based on how much we've spent at the time when the, the, the dollars actually arrived to us. So those, those soft costs are right at just above a million dollars. So where do we head from here? We will ask you to consider approval of the Sale and Issuance Resolution, which is Resolution 2021-12, which has been attached to your agenda. And as I mentioned, we will go to bond pricing and sale on June 8th with that final June 29th closing date, where we will actually receive the funds from, the proceeds from the sale of that debt. So now I can ask, answer any questions that you might have, and then I would ask that you consider approval of Resolution 2021-12.
I think they have any questions for Pete.
Thanks for the great work. I'm ready to make a motion, but don't want to do so unless other folks don't have comments.
Are there any comments?
I, I echo good and hard work. Go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, I make the motion to approve Resolution 2021-12, General Obligation Bond Issuance and Approval of a Capital Project Fund for the General Obligation Bond Projects and Soft Cost Reimbursement.
Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell. I will do a roll call at this time. Commissioner Sitten?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuller?
Yeah.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
All right, it carries 5-0. Thank you, Pete, for your hard work. We really appreciate it. This is just, just giant steps, y'all, for quality of life in our town. And I, I am, I am truly excited to be where I'm at right now in this town with what we've done tonight with these, with these two issuances. It, it, it's just gonna, there, there's just so many good things that are going to come out of this. So I, I can't thank staff enough for the hard work that's gotten to this, to this point. Pete, I can't thank you enough for, for me dumbing down the economics of it where it was understandable. But I, I, again, this is, this is a big day for our town.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. And we prefer making it digestible.
That worked for me, too.
I would, I would like to take a minute. We, we, we formed a task force after the strategic plan and, and the board's direction to make sure that these bonds got issued. We formed a, a task force to make sure that happened. Jamie, Karen, Doug Wright, Leslie Willis, Jesse Baugh, all a part of that, as well as we had at various points, other folks that added definite, relevant and important components to making sure that that task force was successful. So it's really been a, it's really been a team effort to make sure that we got to the finish line on this, and we're, we're there, and we appreciate your support all the way along there. So it's a great day, and we're excited to move forward. And I'm, I'm about to send lots of emails and make lots of other people happy as well. So thank you guys very well, much for your support and your trust in what we were trying to get done here. So thank you.
Yeah, Pete, thank, thank you to you and the.
Cheers to all.
And great job. And, you know, that, that, that AAA rating is something to really be proud of. I mean, forget small town, large companies, everybody aspired to, to be that. And for the town of Davidson to have that is, is really something special, and now we just got to keep that rating.
We'll do our best.
And thank you.
Thank you, everybody, Pete.
Thank you to Karen for seeing us through to this GMP point and to these bonds, too.
Thank you. This has been a lot of really, really good work by a lot of people.
Well, I'm excited. So. With that, we move on to item number D under old businesses is consider approval of supplemental open participation in the 2021 National Citizen Survey. I'm going to turn this over to Town Manager Jamie Justice, and my personal mouthpiece, our Communications Director Amanda Preston. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Well, that was a tough act to follow, but it's good to see everybody. It'll be even better to see everybody in person in another couple of weeks. So I'm here just as a follow-up on the National Citizen Survey. So I spoke to you all back in February when we were preparing to launch the survey to get your feedback on specifically some of the custom questions that we wanted to have for our community. So to just refresh your memory on that, the Traditional Citizen Survey has randomly selected survey participants. You get something in the mail. You get something in the mail, you can participate via mail or fill out the survey online. There are standard questions across all communities. So we are able to do benchmarking. And then the custom questions that through your guidance, we were able to select for Davidson. And then the results through that survey are statistically valid based on the way that the survey is conducted. One of the things that I did mention a little bit in that presentation. That we're now kind of is, is more the topic for tonight is the open participation survey. So this is another tool that we have the option of using. And so this survey is for any resident who was not randomly selected to be a part of the traditional survey. It's online participation only. So there are no mail forms that you can request. It's the same questions as the traditional survey. It has a couple of additional fields asking for your email address, your zip code, because we. Have an additional field where we break it down by region of town. So it asks you to select the area of town that you live in. And then the results just provide an additional data point. They're not included in our official survey results because they're not statistically valid. So if we could move to the next slide, thanks so much. So staff's recommendation is to proceed with opening this open participation survey. We had received feedback when we've done previous citizen surveys that indicated that residents. Who were not selected for the traditional like mail in survey wanted to provide input. And the open participation survey is included in our contract with the National Research Center and Polco. It's not at any additional fee. We didn't have to pay any more to opt into it or out of it. So it's, it's really just a great tool that we can, we can utilize. When we put a message out to the community in April, just to let people know that they, some folks in the community would be receiving. The survey, the traditional survey, we also included something to say that we would be opening the. Open participation survey so that folks would know if they didn't get a mail based survey, that they would have the opportunity to provide feedback. That, you know, the, the board and staff could consider at a later time. And we gave the date of May seventeenth because that was the original schedule that we had laid out. But when we had some concern over some of the online surveys, that's when we reached out to. You all and decided potentially it was, it was best to get further feedback from board. So we, we pushed the pause button on that and in the interim, we've had a small number of residents who have reached out this year. And asked when the survey would be available. So our recommendation is to proceed. However, there is the counterpoint to that, if we can go to the next slide. Is that the open participation survey is optional and it's not needed to complete the National Citizen Survey process. The results from the open participation survey are not statistically valid. They just provide an additional data point for consideration. So it's really just something that we can have in parallel and tandem. And it's not something that is essential or a need to have. It's more of a nice to have. And certainly another way that we can just hear from our community. So. At this point, I'm happy to take questions and, and hear feedback from you all and hopefully get some direction on what you feel would be most appropriate for us. In terms of stepping forward or not.
Yeah, I mean, Amanda, I think. I, I like the idea of doing a survey that goes out to the general population. What I don't like is the repeating of the National Citizen Survey questions. And I think it muddies the water because it's not statistically accurate. And I think also because of the debacle that we had. Highlights the, the, the lack of integrity in our ability at this point in time to manage a survey like that. So I would recommend that we do a supplemental survey. But I think that it's, it's ten to fifteen questions that are tailored and targeted. That are not directly as the same National Citizen Survey. I think we spend some time in a working session to develop those. You come to us with some options and then we go do a supplemental survey. The, the whole point of doing the National Citizen Survey is that it's the statistical representation of the population and you can take it as a factual data point. To give you a good pulse as far as what's going on in the community and how the general overall community feels. I think you're, 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 you're going to cause more confusion. Doing it this way. And I would prefer us to do a secondary survey, but it's ten to fifteen different questions. It's my two cents.
Thank you.
I want to bring up probably a more complicated aspect that was just kind of reinforced as I was looking at your presentation. Amanda, and I didn't want to send emails in advance, but what I think it reinforces in terms of the timeline of the American Citizen Survey. Amanda knows only too well as one of the other folks who worked on the decennial, the census. This past year in the midst of a pandemic. And the number of hoops that we jumped through, including the last, I want to say like the last time in person meeting was Amanda and I meeting with. Representatives at the college as we were desperately trying to figure out how we could account for fifteen percent of our population. And how they were going to do that. What seems very clear to me now is that that fifteen percent of the population is likely never participated in the American Citizen Survey. Because given the timing of year that it likely went to ninety nine Ridge Road and somebody probably didn't chase it down. So I'm now even kind of back to Matthew's point that this is statistically, the American Citizen Survey, we've, we've typically considered it statistically representative. And I'm interested in kind of questioning as to whether in the past, we think that we have actually left out fifteen percent of our population. In trying to get that survey data answered.
Jane, the, the, the survey has gone out. I, I actually received it.
No, but that's what I'm saying. So if a college.
Months ago, or you're saying it just goes to the one location and the college never.
That's, that's, that's my question. And so is there a way to find out whether because of the timing of this and because of COVID. And maybe we have, I'd love to hear that in the past that we have received X percent. That is that representative, you know, from, from that or whether there is. And I was just going to the point that we undertook special effort to try to work with the college to get that information. And if we do anything comparable, or if like I'm saying, we've potentially left out that cohort.
Yeah, the, so, oh, sorry. I was just going to address that the traditional citizen survey. Has the, as Commissioner Ford has pointed out, it did go out quite a while ago. And I think that the period ends, you know, obviously it sends reminders for people who did not go online or submit their, their form via mail. And I believe that that ends at the end of this month. And so we have not received the report yet from Polco. And so I have not heard back in terms of, you know, any, any details on. Participation rates or anything like that, but I'm certainly happy to reach out and see. You know, they obviously track all that information on which parts of town.
Well, I'm curious as to whether it's as easy as asking how many responses from two eight oh three five.
Yeah, we could certainly, yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to ask and see.
So I, I've got a question. So I, I know that this additional open participation survey. Comes at no cost based on the, 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 the package that we have from the vendor.
Yes.
My question is to your end, Matthew, where you talked about. Not the same questions that are on the National Citizen Survey, but a different. Set of questions that would, that would be on the online survey. Is that going to be an additional cost for us to, because you know, this National Citizen Survey, we're only able to filter in one or two. Generically local questions and everything else is, is, is based on a rubric that they use around the country. Are these to add questions to this online survey that we're going to craft at a work session? Is that going to be an additional expenditure to the town?
I'd need to clarify based on the number of questions. However, I do know when we were originally talking about the number of custom questions. You may recall that we were originally talking about doing four custom questions. And then through talking with the vendor, we realized that it was actually more not the number of questions, but the length of the questions. And so we actually had to pare that down to three questions and the question that we actually had to, that had to fall away was one related to equity. And one of the things that Eugene, our affordable housing and equity director, and I talked about is potentially doing a longer survey. That would get at a lot of those questions that would be particularly useful for him and the housing and equity board as well. And that was going to be at no cost. But I'm not sure if that would depend, you know, if it was, if we did five questions versus a ten or fifteen question, that would just be the only thing that I would need to. To clarify. So I think it would be included.
In that the National Citizen Survey that's already gone out to a random sampling. Is a statistical survey that's used as a measurement, this one could end up being an outline for us to do work.
That's, that's what I saw it as Rusty, right? And, and I mean, look, if, even if they charge us a little bit of extra money, I think it's, it's more worth it, right? I mean, that, and, and if I'm happy to get on the phone with them and say, guys, we're asking you to just pull off the standard questions. We're going to write it for you. How hard is it to go publish it, right? Like all the work is in the. Putting it out there online and then gathering the data. It's not in, you know, seven more questions, right?
This also checks that box that, you know, it, it's no different than the vaccine. If you don't get the vaccine right now, it's because you don't, you choose not to get the vaccine. We, we've done everything but knock on every single door in town to facilitate people answering the survey. And, and if you choose not to answer, or if you choose not to go online, if we provide this, this avenue. Then you, you've chosen not to. And it's one of those show up or shut up scenarios for me. So.
A little confused, Matthew, maybe if you can clarify for me, the. What you're suggesting is keep the National Citizen Survey as is because of its statistical. Appropriateness as well as the ability to benchmark against previous years, right? Okay, end of, end of that sentence. And additionally, you're suggesting some sort of survey, a self-selected. Survey by the same folk or doing something internally in-house and. To what public policy purpose would that be?
Well, so the, so it's, Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, it's by the same folk, correct? They're, they're the ones administering this.
Yes, if we were to do it, we could do another survey with the National Research Center or Polco.
We get a free one through the National Research Center. My point is.
But online versus print or that's.
Only online, yes.
So my recommendation is, is to take all, to, to not emulate the original survey, but to basically start from scratch. Take the questions, Amanda, that you and Eugene have already thought up. I'm sure that if we, if we spend an hour or five in a working session. Banging out, banging out a handful of other questions, I think that's a better use. So what's the most effective use of the secondary supplemental survey that can go out to everyone? My answer is a handcrafted survey. I don't need the, how do you feel about the town government question, right? I need more relevant questions based off of our strategic, my recommendation would be, and I'm, I don't want to build, build it now. But it would be to take the strategic plan that we have and do two to four questions under each one of those and say, okay, what, what's the question? Under here, what's the question under here and try and get to the root of. You know, some sort of survey that's relevant that ties back into our strategic plan. That'd be my recommendation. I think that gives us the most bang for the buck versus just running the same play. And then if you get conflicting data, go, okay, well, you know, was it, was it the one person who submitted the survey ninety nine times?
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think it'll help bring clarity, right? And I think keeping it as Amanda, as you recommended, I appreciate the recommendation. I think that could potentially muddy the waters and I think we have an opportunity to turn it into something that, that, that brings more clarity to what we want to accomplish.
Absolutely. I understand. And one point of clarification is that I, I do feel like in, in my recommendation would have been to go ahead with this and. The, doing a open participation survey as a second component. To the traditional citizen survey, which I felt was just being responsive to the requests we've received from the community. And then also doing another survey later in the fall. That could get at some of these components. I was thinking specifically to address the equity piece that we were missing. In the traditional citizen survey question that went out and the open participation. But certainly could extend to the, the other strategical areas.
Yeah, I think it just gets confusing though. You start throwing out two, three, four surveys. I mean, let's just be.
Right, yeah, we don't, we don't want fatigue.
Right.
And we certainly want to build engagement.
We have, we have a, we have a National Citizen Survey that we feel like we can really stand on that's statistically accurate. Let's then take this and, and, and turn it into something a little bit different. And leverage, leverage the same tool, right, in a different way.
And I think as long as we're using the, the larger strategic document. And while I appreciate the desire to narrow in on one particular topic, I think that may have been the, the thing that caused. Some of the initial, you know, issues. So I think if we, if we look and if we were to find out that people were only filling out. Answers to, you know, one particular strategic point. Then you might go back and say, all right, why, why are they only addressing this when we're actually trying to figure out? You know, what they want to say to our overall entire, you know, strategic plan.
I will also add that the tool that the National Research Center and Polco has for doing this kind of survey work is much. Better than the tool that we used the last time. So I don't anticipate that we would have similar challenges. Because we also have more support than we would have had last time too. And they're very used to doing this kind of survey work in communities across the country.
Yeah. So let's, let's leverage that secondary survey to, to go hit to what Jane had mentioned, you know. The whole strategic plan and just, you know, I think we got an opportunity here to create something unique and different and. I think that's better use of the, the funds that we've already paid them.
All right. Other thoughts from board members to, is the majority of you all want to do this? We know to take into account that it's not statistically valid. I would like to do it. I recognize that the second one is not statistically valid. But it provides useful information that is at least instructive. And should be considered for whatever way we give it.
Agreed.
I, I just don't believe it's useful. I, I, I think that if you get apples and oranges on a statistically valid.
Actually agreeing with you. Did anybody else, I thought Jim's comment was to move forward with what we just described, or did I get that wrong?
Nope, that was my comment.
Then I, I miss her.
All right. Any other comments? I said, this actually is an action item.
Go ahead, Matthew, you make the motion.
That's right. So my motion, my motion is to, is to. Set up a working session to, to cancel the current secondary citizen survey as intended. Set up a meeting during a working session. Where, where Amanda, you and staff come to us with some recommended questions that are two or three per strategic initiative. We iron those out and then roll out this supplemental citizen survey to everybody online. And, and Jane, we need you to work with the college to try and figure out how we get it out to the, the students.
Betsy, you got that?
That's a heck of a motion.
It's not even the smallest one, I think we.
And I endorse that motion.
All right, we, we're going to vote on this. Jamie, Amanda, did that give you guys directives?
Yeah, I'm clear.
Plus, we're getting ready to vote on it right now. And I just wanted you to know that I, I want you to be clear on what we're voting on.
Yeah, don't make it any clearer. We're good. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. So at this time, based on what Commissioner Ford just said, I'm going to do a roll call. Commissioner Sitten.
Yes.
Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Fuller.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Okay, so that motion carried. I'm not going to repeat that motion, but it did carry.
Don't make it any clearer is the question tonight.
Thank you.
Betsy, Betsy, you correct me if I'm wrong. I don't even think that makes the top five in terms of length.
Hold on, I'm still writing your motion. I had to track the votes, too.
Lit up.
Okay.
Got it. But that was not your longest motion you've had in our three years together. So thank you.
Challenge accepted.
We're moving on to item nine, and I'm I'm a little upset.
Thank you all.
Karen's last meeting, and I planned on this being a filibuster tonight, but we're not tracking that way. So anyway, item number nine is new business. Mr. Justice, will you do some reviewing of upcoming agenda items?
Yes, sir. Just to clarify, there's no action items right here. Just want to be clear about that. Okay. All right, a couple of things for June, just to lift up, June 8th, approving the budget and also approving the 160D changes to the planning ordinance that have been going through the process. The Linden Mill, the property donation that we discussed at a previous meeting, our town attorney and other attorneys, they are working on that. So we're that's why it wasn't on the agenda tonight. We're hoping it'll be ready for the June 8th meeting. So that is still working through. We also are going to bring the downtown gathering space, the 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 next phase to bring back to you guys. Make sure we've got it right. So before we move forward, y'all have approved the budget amendment. But we're going to bring that back to you just to make sure we get that scope the way you want it. Our we have an affordable housing plan for Davidson Bay coming through. And so this will be our first one, really kind of bring into you more interim. So this will have gone to the Housing and Equity Advisory Board to look at. And then it would come to you all to take a look at and get that same presentation. And then ultimately, the Housing Advisory Board will make a recommendation. Then it'll come back to the town board for approval, likely at that June 22nd meeting. There's no payment in lieu request involved with this plan. So that's the differentiation with this one versus HOPE. But we're trying that new process out to make sure you all are in the loop. So I just want to bring that to your attention. And then we also have a pre-development consultation for a Davidson condos project that would likely come in for town board approval. You'll recall, we used to do those with some projects when it was something either for town board approval or preconditional request. So these folks would want to talk about what they're thinking about and for the board to give some feedback. So that that location is over in Davidson Landing on the west side of the interstate. So there's a parcel over there of that around those other condos that could be developed. So that's that location. And then June 22nd Equity Program Action Update, just to provide a one-year check-in on where we are, where we see that program going. And then we're having the citizen survey coming in with that traditional results, bringing that to you. And then some and then Minority Women Business Enterprise Goals. That's something we want to be able to talk with the board about what we could do there. So those are the items we have tracking. Somewhere in June, I think we're going to need to take some action about these American Rescue Plan funds. So we're still trying to figure that out and getting guidance from our League of Municipalities and others. But somehow there's some acceptance of of getting those funds whenever they do come trickling down to us. So there 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 is an allocation in the law, just so you all know, where half of it goes to the state and then they have 30 days to distribute it to the towns. So that money's coming to us per the law, essentially. And then what we do with it, that's a separate question, and we we definitely want to have more thorough discussion. But just understand that that those funds start to come to us here relatively quickly. All right, that's all I got. Anybody got any questions about any of that?
I I do want to say quickly, Jamie, I had I hosted the other six Mecklenburg County mayors for lunch today at North Harbor and Mayor Atkins from Mooresville. So there were eight of us in the room. And five of the mayors commended the town. They had seen the news report last night on the affordable units at the HOPE project that was on WSOC, and they'd seen it on the news. And they thought it was good stuff to hear that 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 we had done this partnership. And and a couple of them asked questions about the Davidson Community Foundation and things like that. So that was good that that they acknowledged that and 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 see the the work that we are trying to do in providing the level of affordable housing here in Davidson. So any other points of discussion at this time? Jim?
Rusty. Could somebody send that link? We have that on video. The the clip about the HOPE property.
Yeah, somebody, Amanda or somebody can dig it off WSOC's website and send it out. So we've got it. It was, you know, it was good. They interviewed Eugene and Dave Cable. So it was, it was it was a good spot for us. So.
Find it and send it out to everybody.
Okay. Any other comments before I ask Mr. Justice to summarize? Jamie, take it away.
Okay, I'm flipping through my notes here from the budget discussion. I'm going to work on, we're going to bring the the budget ordinance to the board. We're going to work on that Greenway Crossing funding in the CIP, how to address that. We're also going to look at the open space payment in lieu, thinking about methodology going forward on that. So that's a longer longer term, looking at that. Everything else is showing up in the motions, at least through the actions. So Karen, did I miss anything? Betsy?
No, that's what I had to, Jamie.
Returning to in-person. I'm excited. Can't wait to see y'all in person.
We will be in person next in in June. Karen, unfortunately, will not be with us. This is her last meeting tonight. So we bid you adieu and just don't forget, we'll be sending you an invitation sometime around February or March of next year to come do a ribbon cutting.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it.
I think we should all go to a Gaston County Board meeting and show up for public comment.
I I'm not going to say it. That is completely within your purview to decide.
We're going to what we're going to do is we're going to email them out to Betsy and make her read them.
I, that sounds phenomenal.
Mayor Pro Jim Campbell.
I don't want to. I don't want to stop this conversation about Karen. I just did want to say that, you know, next Monday, being Memorial Day, as you drive through the community, we put flags out on veterans' graves at all three cemeteries this past Sunday. So we acknowledge all the veterans. But as you know, Memorial Day is specifically for those who died in service to our country. So I just ask you to keep that in mind versus a day off at the quote unquote start of summer. So I think if you, when you drive past our our three cemeteries and see the number of graves, it's very telling. And once again, I told the story to the scouts and the junior ROTC cadets when we went to Christian Aid Society that by my best guess, there are more than two dozen veterans buried in that cemetery. And only two of them that I have found had the right to vote when they served our country. So all of the other veterans who are buried there served our country, swore an oath to the Constitution, but didn't have the right to vote when they did so. So keeping that in mind on Memorial Day.
Thanks, Jane. All right, well, I don't guess I can hold you up any longer, Karen. So I I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Commissioner Ford's made the motion. I will do a roll call. Commissioner Sitten.
Yes.
Commissioner Fuller.
Yes.
Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Campbell.
I was going to say no, but I guess I'll say yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
I too was going to say no. We should have left it at a three to two vote, Jane. Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. We stand adjourned. Karen, again, I can't thank you enough.
I just said a test bit emoji, so. Good evening, everybody.
Good night and good morning.